Alright, everyone.
Yes. Sure was. The guards again.
Okay, everyone, we're live.
Uh, so it is six thirty-one, we're gonna call the meeting order. I'm Charlie Vincent Bennett, uh, president of the, uh, East Greenbush, uh, Library Board, uh, for trustees. Um, just to a quick review of the agenda for this special meeting, we've got public comment, uh, slated fifteen minutes. Um, we've got unfinished business to discuss, and then for German, so really just the scope of the meeting tonight is to discuss, as we mentioned in the list, meeting, uh, on Tuesday, uh, further discussion on the potential purchase of my transaction. Um, so, see, or anyone have any, uh, issues with the scope of the agenda, the order of agenda? If not, um, we're gonna transition to public comment, and I know normally, uh, we get, it's not often we get public comment. But, um, seeing the sign up list, we got, um, one comment submitted, um, through Jill, uh, electronically, and then we've got a list of speakers. So just to run through again, refresh approach to the public comment period, really just, um, I think the main takeaway is three minutes per, per speaker. Uh, we're going to order through the list, um, I'm gonna do the, I'll read in the, uh, there's one written comment first, and then we'll shift to, uh, public comment from there, first comment from there, um, okay, so I'll start off.
Charlie, can you share some questions? Only get further along, questions arise, gonna follow up ask questions, or this is the only time here in the most significant period of the year?
Yeah, we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can add it to, we can do a second public comment, and we can add it at the end as an extra, and I don't even, if there's some more questions.
Or are you thinking more like dynamic convo, or?
You can be, I don't shut up, so. I know.
Yeah, I mean, let's see how we get through the public comment, and we'll go out with a full time here. Alright, so, um, first one, so it is, uh, members of the committee trustees. I write to express my thoughts about the request for the East Greenbush, uh, police department to build a new headquarters on East Greenbush library property. Certainly, there could be benefits for the library, both financial and safety. However, I am concerned about the other ramifications. For example, we need to realize that sadly, we live in a time where many being police presence is something less than a protective one. As members of the East Greenbush Library Outreach Committee, we are striving to make businesses, succeed in helping businesses and community to become aware of the varied services we offer. They include career counseling and ESL programs which are of special benefit to those near our community and country. I worry that these efforts may be stymied with such a close police presence, very often on our website, we see the words "we belong here." We hope our neighbors will continue to think of us that way. Our neighbors include the Y and any Hawthorne Ridge. Any decision will certainly affect them, can we consider asking them for their input prior to making a decision? This is a complex issue, and I thank the board for letting me express my views. Here's truly Roseanne. Alright, so that was, that was the one for, uh, in person, so now we're gonna shift to, um, oh, that was one for digital. Uh, we shift to in person, and first we've got, uh, Jennifer Romer.
If you want, you don't have to.
Yeah, no, we, we, we should decide it before, or folks come.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Alright, okay, um, and then we go, uh, Benny.
Well, first of all, thank you for having this public hearing, uh, I had no idea that this was even on the radar, I mean, I don't know how I missed it. My name is Betty Bellino Juno, and I was a trustee here at the library for twelve years, so my heart is real with this library. It's the crown jewel of this community, and it's beloved by so many people. And I've always had a very positive relationship with the police, been down at the police station a number of times, but I was up. But my car was rear-revved into three times at stoplights, and the last time right here on the hill, and it was totaled, so I always had to go and get the police report for the insurance, I wasn't arrested. So I know that there is a need for a new police station. Our community has grown, and we really depend on the police to keep us safe, but I don't think this is the proper location for a police department. It's a bucolic area, and it changes the whole nature of the community when you put a police department there. Not everyone has a positive relationship with police. Even myself, I get nervous when I see a police car, what have they done wrong? So I'm afraid that people may not feel comfortable coming to the library. This is a safe place for so many people, and I've heard that a number of times, not only when I was a trustee, but when I took outreach as a friend of the library. Uh, we did an outreach on Saturday, and so many people came up to us and told us how much they love this library. I just don't think it's an appropriate place. I know that it would probably be better to have it on Columbia Turnpike, or Route Four. I worry about the traffic, I mean, if there's a police call and they have to go out immediately, going down Michael's Road, you know, or going around the roundabout, what happens when the buses are lined up? How does the police get around them? There isn't a lot of room on either side of the road. So there's a lot of concerns that I have about having the police station right here on this property. We've talked a number of times how to use that property, um, it's a desirable location, but I don't think it's the correct location for the police department. Thank you.
Uh, Tom? Hi, uh, Tom, I'm a member of the Retsah County Legislature, and I'm also, like I said, liaison to the library, just a brief statement. I know you guys are probably doing it in the middle of a feasibility study, or just signing up for it. Uh, just wondering if, if perhaps as part of the feasibility study, it's not too late, whether you could flip it, maybe consider the possibility of putting a new town hall here, and have the current town hall retrofitted as a police station.
And Paul? Uh, we'll, we'll probably do it during, um, the discussion, the study, that's, we'll do the discussion period.
That's all I've got, I just consider, I, I, uh, I think having a town hall here would be a one-stop shopping, if you like, business, DMV, town hall, Hawthorne Ridge, the library, all those things. It's like a community, real community center for doing, um, you know, basic work with people in the community, uh, who need to have driver's license, picking out a book, maybe getting a, uh, a, a dog permit or something like that, it's all, it's more of a, a, a shopping area or a, an area. I think the police department is so important, they require a certain specific area, and this, and the location of the police department on, uh, on, uh, Columbia Turnpike, I think is served us well in the past, the problem with the police department is anybody who's been in there, is it's terrible. It's, and it's probably not gonna be recertified because it's in a, in a difficult location, anybody's had, like Judy, who's had a number of contacts with the police department going there, and you know how bad it is downstairs. It's, it's, it's fairly functional, I think the members of the police department and, and the chief do a remarkable job in working with what they've got. If instead you expand it up to the town hall, and let DCJ ask, or whoever the accrediting authority is, let, let them know that that's the plan, to go into, up into the town hall, we have more spatial, space, spacious area, uh, I think that would meet with, uh, crew from the state as, as well. Uh, I, uh, currently serve as a, uh, American Correctional Association auditor, and that was one, that would be one of the things we would look at, where you could expand, or how you would explain, expand. And location is important, and again, just to summarize, as I say, the, the location of the police department on Columbia Turnpike is good. The lo, the, the way the building is laid out, the way the, uh, offices of the police department is, is not good. So I think the simplest solution, perhaps, is at least ask, at this point, to the feasibility study to consider that as well. Now, I know it might be a higher expense, but it's something to take a look at, I think, rather than just say, look, rather than just say no, uh, we're gonna look at having, uh, a police department in a, in a more suitable location, so.
Um, uh, Colleen?
I just signed a solid, I thought the first I.
Alvin?
I'm here to observe the meeting, I have no comments.
And we've got, uh, supervisor, uh, the chief, Dan, um, just making sure, if, I know you folks are from the town, in case anyone, I don't want to give the opportunity. Um, and then, uh, Ed, and Ron, if anyone, if not, no others, okay, cool. Alright, awesome, appreciate everyone's, uh, input there.
Can I ask a question? I didn't sign it, I'm a little late with Karen, I'll fill it in, I'm a little late.
I know, I've been at the rest of practice.
But it's a question, so maybe I can't ask now, but I know with the movie of the firehouse, there was a whole town forum, is there a plan for a town forum?
Awesome, alright, now first, I'll take, am I, oh, yeah, go.
Now I'm game to you, we didn't make it up on the spot, we considered town hall. The courtroom and the court office comes with town hall. If you want four hundred frequent flyer criminals on your property every Thursday night, and sixty-five vehicle and traffic transgressors every Monday, then sure, we'll consider it. We decided on the police department to protect me. And this is what I wanna say, is we came to you, we made a request, I, I'm pretty sure it was probably the most profound request you guys have got. Uh, you blew us off, let's face it, okay? You didn't even vote on it, I got a text the day before your September third meeting asking to found another site. Okay, that's the treatment, now, you have powers, you can make this vote, you can say no, the town has powers too. And one of our powers allows us to take this power with. And if we don't have a meaningful, informed conversation on October twenty-second, after next week, we're gonna file eminent proceedings, and this is what happens. We get the land repressed, we get our market ready, you keep community way, and we build the police station. The alternative is you accept our annual partnership, treat us like we have some kind of merit in this town, and do your due diligence. You've been in the police station, how many of you been in the police station? I had, so, I asked somebody, if there was an emergency chemical attack in this town, in addition to the people who work in this building, how many human beings could you fit in this building? And the answer was about three hundred, okay? The seven members of this board cannot fit in our police station at the same time. For more than a decade, the library and the police station were both in town hall. There was never an incident, and you moved out of that crap hole you were in, and twenty-three, and moved into the Taj Mahal, and twenty-three years later, the police department is still in there with a hole, and they're one inspection away from being condemned. What do I do if I have a police department with no police station? So, is this an essential public purpose event? But here's what you're missing, you guys watch the news too much. The East Greenbush Police, right, you and me, Trevor McGrady is the sergeant, he's driving down Third Avenue in the middle of the night, there's a guy goes a hundred miles an hour drunk and hits a pole. Car's about to start on fire, Trevor's right there, he goes in, can't get the man out, has to come back and catch his breath. Goes back in the second time, cannot get that car, it's that close to, to burn. He goes in a third turn. And he breaks that guy out of the car. And when I went downstairs to tell him, after you went in the second time, you had done your job, he said to me, my job isn't done till I get him out of it, okay? The Griffin Hotel, he's a detective, maybe you know his wife, she works at Columbia. I had a friend whose partner worked his own life. Funeral, four different members of the family, so thank officer for the way they took care of us. I go downstairs, I see Griffin, I tell him, and he looks at me like, like I fell out of the sky. He said, I didn't do anything, just did my job. These are not RoboCop, this is not a militia that's out there with ice masks banging people to the ground. This is Mikey and Mark Harrington, the rock of football, Columbia. And here's the rug, window breaks downstairs in your house. I have twenty-five men and women who will die to protect your family. They will die right there, twenty-five years old, have a baby of their own, they will die right there. That's the people who work for the police department in East Greenbush. Right now, they are being tortured by where they are. Governor Hochul came to visit, and she said, you've got to get out of here, and I don't care what it takes. Assemblyman McDonald came, Congressman Josh Riley, they're like all scouring hills for money. Now, he, what you're missing is there are always more good guys than bad guys in a police station. I just heard somebody infer that the library, less safe, police station. Give me a break. They're not ICE, they are not a militia, they are doing me, and they're brave, and they're trained, and they do nothing like what you see on television. This is the best community police department in the capital region, that's the best chief of police this town has ever had. What we're asking for you is to join us in partnership, because truthfully, if there was a police, police station there, there would be four in fact civic institutions in a row, we would take care of Columbia, uh, of community way. And you wouldn't even know we were there once it was built. But what we've got when we came here was, off the top of my head, yeah, and again, I mean, I'll be fair, I've had ten years in this office, I've been called every name and book, but the most insulting thing I ever heard is you imply that I tried to ruin casino into this town. I said, I watched the tape, I sacrificed the last phase of my life to protect this town with a casino. Ten years later, I'm still the supervisor because of the way I protect this town. I'm not here to hurt you, I'm not here to destroy the library, I'm here to ask you to be part of this community. And, anyone else can talk, but that's what we're up to. You take us seriously, or we don't take you seriously. If you haven't been in my police station, and you're going to vote against this resolution, it's a mission, mission, you're sorry. We really should, if you're part of this community, it's okay that you, that the police department is, is a disaster, not even, it's not a, you have to, I can't even describe it. You have to see it. If Ronnie Yates stays in the office he's in for another five years, he won't be able to breathe or hear, okay? We have a grinder on three days a month, it smells like raw sewage. That's what these people, and yet, bell rings, they go out, they go do anything you need, that's all, that's. I represent them, I am, have it in politics, I am moving to the left of Karl Marx. If you think I'm the guy who's bringing police police here, it's other people, that's gonna be searching for people. It's not the way it goes, that's not who we are, and that's not what we're trying to do, so my plea is, take us seriously. And it's not about the public, it's about you guys doing your duty. You owe us that. These guys come, they do cookouts, everything else, they do seatbelt aids, they come for you, why couldn't you come for them? You couldn't have come back and looked, you broke my heart. And so, where do we go from here?
Appreciate that, thank you for a good segue, um, just to close up the, um, public comment period, any other?
Charlie, just a few. Um, I'm not gonna repeat a lot of the things as first comments, yeah, but I did wanna clarify a few things, because I also watched afterwards, and I guess I had concerns that there was comments made that were innuendos that, um, again, um, you go by Mrs. Engel? Yeah, yeah. That made a comment that, you know, she didn't really make a, you didn't really wanna make a comment, because you were privy to other things that, you know, may concern you. So to me, like, we're about facts in my profession, you know, so if you're gonna make a statement, you back it up by examples. So, I guess I'm here to ask you, you know, openly, what are those things that you felt, maybe you were privy to, that implied to people that were here, that the, the police department wouldn't be a good fit to be a neighbor?
I, I don't know, but, but, I don't know.
Because when someone makes a comment like that, it, it leaves it out there that, oh, there might be things that you know, and especially with your husband being in his position, having worked closely with us all these years, um, that's kind of an innuendo, and that things are going on that maybe you may not know about as the general public, and that I don't think that's a fair statement to make, because I fully disclose to you, we had one person get out of the police car, run off with his handcuffs once, years and years ago, on a New Year's Eve night, and we grabbed him down the street. So I'm not here to hide anything, and if there are things that are going on, coming negative in nature, I'm certainly gonna tell you, because they're out there in the public. But I certainly, I just don't like when someone makes a comment and doesn't back it up with an example, because it leaves people thinking the worst, when that's not necessarily the case. Um, another thing that was brought up, I think, by, and I, uh, you may have brought it up, about that years ago, I think that the plan was at one point, the town hall and the PD to be up here on this site, and I, I had not had a chance to do some digging and find that out, but I think that, um, that was all inclusive, including the PD back in the day, when, before this was being built, or even constructed, or even maybe thought about being built. So, that's just something else that I think that maybe we should, you know, take into consideration, in addition to the fact, like Spencer Conway said, it's like, you know, we were neighbors with the courtroom from here to your, your desk away, where people were being brought in, in a day, when many more people were brought before judges in arraigns. Nowadays, there's only a few, a handful of remandable offenses that people are brought before judges for, in our New York State penal law, as opposed to, um, all of them remandable back in the day. So we had a high traffic volume of people being brought up for arraignments in the courtroom, which was right down the corridor from the library. Also, Professor Conway commented on, you know, I understand if, um, um, you had mentioned that people might be concerned about coming here, but it's never been a concern when we've been here for all the events, we've been, I, to my knowledge, it's never been brought up to us that maybe the cops should have stopped coming for cookouts, and the music events, and the car seat checks, and the drone or canine events. So, why is it okay to have us here for those events in your building, or outside of your building, as opposed to in our own building next door? So I don't think that's a fair assessment, um, to say that people would be afraid to come and use the facilities, when they have been afraid to come, when they don't know when we're here. We're here different times, we're here for calls, uh, those, you know, that has to be taken into consideration as well, that, um, you know, we're here already, we're part of the community. People, yes, there's always gonna be someone that may have a bad experience with a police officer, but I can guarantee there's a lot more that have had positive experiences with us than negative, because I can tell you that as the chief, based on the cards I get, the cookies we get, the food we get, the thanks we get, people stopping by, a forty-four-year-old man who just saved his leg, the guy, he walked out of the hospital, full cardiac arrest. So, um, for the thanks we get, compared to an occasional person that's that's mad because we wrote him a ticket, or they got arrested because they were stealing at Price Shopper, you know, they can be mad at me all they want, I'll take the thank yous of all the people that, you know, we deliver babies to, or we solved their home, you know, their house that was revised. So, yes, people are maybe scared, you know, but majority of our community, and like Spencer Conway said, we grew up here, a lot of us. I was born and raised in East Greenbush, and we, it's important for us to have a good relationship with our community, um, as we partner with the library, the Y, going to save a few things at Hawthorne Ridge. And Angela said she couldn't be here today, but she did ask me to express that they're fully in support of us, obviously, if this were to work out, this partnership, for them being there, and Shannon as well. Then another other thing about the traffic, I knew you had touched on, which I know you weren't here the last meeting, and I know there were some people that weren't here either. Columbia Turnpike is a much more difficult place for us to get out of, on a, on the turnpike with traffic, it's more residential, so far as noise goes, we have many more people over there. We're not just driving around like, you know, hoo-ha's blowing our sirens and whatnot, we use them as needed, obviously, to puzzle these, to not alarm the people. But this area actually here, buses, um, you know, we have lights and sirens for that to get through, um, you know, we generally don't have huge issue getting out of the turnpike, on occasion there is, because we use our lights and sirens in the meantime, but over here it's much less residential area, therefore, a lot less cars, and people pulling out of secondary roads, inside driveways, and things to that nature. Right, that was also discussed, that we would have an entrance off Luther Road, um, and a Michael Road itself, not a community way driveway. Um, so, I'm having talked to, um, the superintendent of the school district, and the fire chiefs as well, um, and Angela from Hawthorne Ridge, and Shannon from the YMCI. Um, you know, this is a hugely, um, and I'm repeating, repeating some of this stuff, I'm sorry, I'll be brief about it for some of you that are already here, for those of you that weren't. This is a very densely populated area of our vulnerable populations, a lot of times our youth and our seniors being over in these facilities. Um, a comment was made, uh, I believe, I'm sorry again, by you, um, that, you know, what's the difference responding from, and I may be paraphrasing, from the turnpike to respond if there was an incident up here, it's from here, life, that's the difference. And I can tell you that, having been involved in situations where, um, the response time was the difference between life and death for people. So, coming from the turnpike to come up to our high school for an incident, or as opposed to coming from here to the high school for an incident, or the YMCI, where there's, could be a mass amount of kids, or Hawthorne Ridge, where there could be a mass amount of seniors, or the library, minutes, and that's, the difference is life and death. So I think that is, um, careless to make that comment, and reckless, because it's not factual, and unless you're in our shoes and understand navigating traffic and responding to someplace, to make that is, is not factual. Um, yes, um, the other thing I wanted to touch on, to respond to the woman that replied via email, is, um, you know, yes, you have the career programs here in the ESL, but again, to counter that, we also do programs here. Um, and I don't believe, and I could be wrong unless the board knows it's something, I don't believe there's been negative comments made. Um, I'm assuming we would have communicated about that, if there's ever any concerns about us being here. So equally, maybe, well, I should say equally, because I don't know how often you do them, but quantity-wise for people, I'm going to take a guess that sometimes some of the events that we have here draw, partnered with you draw bigger crowds, maybe an ESL program, um, I could be wrong, so, but I think if we were to sit down and look at numbers, I would think that you're gonna have more people coming to your music and the art events, or, excuse me, sorry, that's your event, the music, um, events here, than maybe on a regular basis into an ESL program. So, um, the other things, um, Mr. Grant commented on, um, you know, we have, we did look into it initially before starting the feasibility, um, process about location and financial, and to rehab the police station, um, and we're governed by the Office of Corrections, who we get every three years, comes, I think I mentioned it last time, he does the review, and we have been grandfathered in because of the nature of our building, we just can't accommodate some of the things we need to accommodate. Um, so they're not kicking us out tomorrow, and I don't, you know, it sounded kind of like we wanna get recertified, that's not the case, but we do work that we have. Is it always the safest? No, we have to secure our guns somewhere that necessarily isn't most ideal for us, for safety purposes, when we're bringing, as the defendant to the station. But to financially have to rehab a police, a town hall to fit our needs, and in addition, to build a new, um, town hall, just financially, that's just not feasible for us. And that was batted around quite a bit.
Well, the other thing, Chief, is the scope, you guys are, we're looking, we're looking at something that would have the slightest I can't make town hall police department, because we have a brick edifice like that of that size. Be the public safety center in a town of this size would be a press, it would walk back all the messages you're talking about, giving people out of the police, we are a fortress in town, if they need a modern police station, go there. Who they really are, it wouldn't be anywhere near the size of this, this is twenty-two thousand square feet, we were looking at M twelve.
With your garage. If I'm lucky.
And running for six halls.
But, and it's from location for years to come, we're not looking, and Danny has done a wonderful job as our D W commissioner to, um, fix our place up. Not in ours, I mean, we did get, you know, Mr. Worth thing fixed, most of the time, so, but a lot of the things he's fixed up and put band-aid on. But it's not a building that is going to be here in fifty years, we're looking at somewhere that is gonna be here long after many of us are, are here, and, and me in the profession, so, um, those are just some of, the other one of the things is, I think the other comment that was made was about how we have reached out to the county executive. I've talked to, um, him on multiple occasions at different events, saying, did you find us a new place for a police station yet, did you give me any money? And, and, and it hasn't happened, and I'm not saying that's his problem, but I, it's certainly by not, lack of me being annoying, and anyone that knows me knows I'm persistent. So, um, no comments necessary for us, so, um, so I have reached out to multiple people, I have, um, we put a grant forward, um, through some congressional spending money, and that's where we're, we're hoping to get money, because, so that it's not a burden on the taxpayers, so, that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for anything I said or any contours.
I want to apologize if I said anything that came across like I know more than anyone, or I I want to apologize if I said anything that came across like I know more than anyone or I know anything about anything. And I don't know the context about the response time. I don't even, I don't even know how I would even know anything about response times here, there or whatever. I apologize if I said anything. In that regard. And I, the only reason I asked about, you know, was, you know, if the town was making enough work, you know, or couldn't have a casino. And that huge, then maybe a smaller building, you know, I'm just a volunteer. I didn't, I didn't know. I'm just trying to ask.
I don't want you to be upset about this. It's just that in my life, what happened was I retired and for the year that I was retired, I spent in this life. My two-year-old granddaughter, he joined every playgroup. We were having kids from four afternoons a week. And what, what I did.
Just offering ideas.
I know. But what I did was, I'm 73 years old now. I was 63. I was retired and someone tried to put a casino in East Greenbush. And because of the way I expressed myself in leadership in a group called Safety in East Greenbush, I was elected. As a renegade, I ran against every political party, simple line on the bottom of the ballot to my friends. You remember? Yeah. And, and what we did was we fought for this community. And I, I made a vow that the five people who tried to bring that casino, we would never hold office in this town again. And they have not. And I've been through open heart surgery. I lost my oldest son. I have given my heart and soul to this town. But Kami, you know, we've been friends. I care about you. I'm not trying to hurt you, but that appeared, and Charlie came out for this because I yelled at him way too much about this. But it's just that I want to go home. I have grandchildren on missing track leads, cello, recycles and everything else. But I made a vow, Peter, and we put together the best team this town has ever seen, right down this line. I'll take all five of these people. We put together the best team this town's ever seen. We just modernized the. Water system, basically. If this group of people doesn't get this police department out of that station, it's, it's only going to happen in its worst. And when it's forced, we're going to move the police department into the red barn in the town park. That's where we have to go. We have nowhere. And all we're asking, all we asked was to take this seriously, understand what we're talking about. Because the day before I was supervisor, I knew nothing about the police station. Nothing about police department. I spent my whole life trying not to run into police. And then I became responsible in your lives and the families of 25 officers and get to know them, get to see day to day, get to see my American. That's what it's called. If somebody ran it in 12-inch cutting knife. You know, these are great people and we want them to go home. The only way we can do that is if we deploy all of the things we have developed in our police department, especially. Chief and, and keep these guys safe. They need the best connections. They need this community to say thank you to them. Because they're not what you see in the news. They're not, you know, the guy who killed George Floyd. You hear all this stuff. That's not who these guys are. If they were, they wouldn't be working for me and they wouldn't be working for Elaine. They work really hard on all of the control and that quality. We can train anybody with that brain. They have to come and take whatever one wants. You know, we, we check them for bias, for all current, the fact that checks are unbelievable, but they go through. And of all people, I'm ashamed of that for my whole life. But now that you get to know these people, you have, you have to protect them. And as a community, we have to cherish that. They put it, they put it on the line. And I will try.
I would just like to extend the offer again. I know I spoke to some, you know, please come see what we're working with. Please come meet our people. You know, I can't. Kill at once, but I can make arrangements to have these come down and see what goes on down there. You know, Superficial Conway brought it up last time, you know, we did do during the police reform, a community. Kind of like the word.
Servant.
Gerbering. And, you know, we kicked butt on it, you know, and I'm proud to say that. We have a really great team of guys and girls. And again, a lot of them homegrown and we care and we love doing the community events. And I don't, regardless, I don't want us to stop doing community events. I love that we partner with all the establishments on Community Way. As well throughout our community. My, my community pleasing budget can attest to that, that it's nothing but increased over the years since I've been chief. And I would like to continue to do that. So like, I get people have opinions about police, but you know, judge us by who we are, not by what you know, you think you know about police. And that's all. Please come see us and any questions, you can reach me anytime. And if I didn't answer anything or you have things come up, please feel free to reach out.
I have a question if I can pose this to you. For the record though, you guys have been great partners. We've worked with Jill. Cost, yeah. And we, when we think of the community. We think of Jill as, during COVID, we met every Friday with Shannon from the Y, Chief, Jeff Simons. And we came away with a real sense of community because we were, we were in uncharted territory and we're all puzzling it together. And Jill was not only a good partner, but she was good help to me, to Jeff Simons. We fought for these problems together. And so forgive my attitude, but I was driven with this argument that we didn't get that.
Quick question. You've got to be at a different spot. It's a terrible location. I like your optimism that people wouldn't want to shut it down. I think if you had an adequate way to go through there, it would at least generally suggest that you shouldn't be there.
Oh, OSHA has. I forgot about that. They have.
Should be in another location. And I think you've got to do that relatively quickly. I do agree with Jack. Police force in this town and next to Chief Elaine and the rest of the, is, is the best anywhere. You know, I, I represent a number of communities. East Greenbush Police. Department is by and far the best. So I don't think we're talking about a bad view of police or police shouldn't go one place or another. I just bring up the feasibility study and it seems it was somewhat limiting. I would just suggest the feasibility study be expanded if it's possible to do a couple of other options. You've got the feasibility study perhaps saying, you know, that this is the best location. What about breaking it down? Maybe town hall and the police station in one location? Or the police station and being richer than the town hall. Give more than one option so the library would take a look at that and see. What they should, should be considering. And I understand cost is a factor and I look at it from the OSHA perspective. If you were to tell them that relatively quickly, we can move out of the pit of town hall and, and we spend some of the services upstairs in the town hall. I think that would get them off your back maybe. I'm just suggesting, don't limit, this is a very important decision. Don't limit yourself to a feasibility study just saying there's one result. Look at at least two, maybe three different results.
It's pretty insulting that we think we have all this.
Well, you just said no, Jack. So I'm just responding to that.
I said what?
As the police, as a feasibility study considered anything else? And you said, just said to me, no.
No, because we've already considered that.
So let's provide the board that, as the board of trustees here have been provided with the other considerations and results of your research.
Four sites on Columbia Turnpike have all fallen through. And Tom, I don't report to the library board.
Well, you're asking for the board to sell that property to you. So maybe. Jack, with all due respect.
No, I do not report to you.
I don't report to you either, Jack. So we're even there.
Point taken and asked, answered and ignored. So let's move on.
Well, Jack, I will say this to you. You're coming in, you're threatening to take property by eminent domain. An easier way to deal with, provide the board of trustees here with maybe some options of what you've already considered. Give them some information, open, transparent.
You show up after we were, we did that and act like we're at the starting line. We came here more than two months ago. We made a presentation. We answered questions. We made ourselves available. There were three trustees who weren't at meetings. None of them contacted us. Nobody came and looked at the police station. We were not engaged in the conversation that we wanted to have.
And where you are right now, Jack, is you're threatening to take over land by eminent domain. Let's play the tape. You know, take a look at it. I mean, it's.
You're, you're missing the point. Either we come to some kind of compensation or I hand the tape. Here you go. Let's be clear on what I said.
Okay, good.
Okay, we're going to switch to trustees for. No questions for town. Logistics or.
Do you want to just throw in your two cents? Well, so I missed the, so first of all, I'm Kayla. I missed the July meeting because my doggy is something he shouldn't have. He's had surgery and blah, blah, blah. And I literally just got back from Seattle from the last speakers today. So apparently I missed a lot. I just wanted to put my two cents in because when it was brought to me, I was eager to hear your. What the, you know, the project was. I seem to be in the minority. So I didn't really pursue it just because I have a lot going on clearly. But I just wanted my opinions known because I really haven't been for all that much reasons. So.
So I will also, I wasn't at the meeting. I think there's been some communication issues between the board and obviously the town and even internally. That I think the question that we were hearing was not what you are telling us your question is. And that is for us, we have never. Ever discussed what we want to do with that land. And we also feel that it's the land, it's, it's community, our community is an important input to that land. And we do have our strategic plan, the library's constituency has grown much like the town. And I'm assuming a lot of those people are listening in our town that are, you know, our library. Our question, but what we were being asked, I thought, was whether or not we wanted to sell our property. We were not in a position to, we'd never discussed what we think would be best. And I think part of the board's responsibility would be to gather information from their constituents. To see what usage we, might be best for the library. That's not to say that it wouldn't be a. Police department. It's not to say that it wouldn't be a police department. So I think in fairness, and the other thing was the first time I ever heard anything about it was July. Which we have a liaison from the town that, yeah, that comes to meetings. And I just, I, it made me question when this whole thing developed because I kind of felt a little blindsided maybe as a board member. So. Do that as it may.
But that, we understood that. And that's what we want. And we asked, we asked, we said, we would like to do this here. Here's how it would work. We would pay you whatever deemed was a fair market rent up to a point. And off we go. The problem with what Tom says is that eminent domain, it, it's not a threat. It is a community making a decision on the best use. There's two tests for an eminent domain proceeding. First, is it an essential home? And this of course is one of the examples that is used in all the cases. The case law, this is a police station. The second is what is the financial hardship on the seller? And since that is two acres that I'm. Going to protect, you know, ever, ever use. There's no financial hardship on the seller. So in the world of eminent domain, I've had, that's why I know that this, this is the easiest and most obvious and responsible use of that domain that you'd have encountered. Because this library is, you have turned this, libraries are not getting bigger. Okay. They're miniaturizing like everything else. I am a library rep. I go on, when I get three days off and these people move out to them, I go to Providence and use the Rockefeller Library for three days. And then I go in there and there's 16 hours a day. I love this one. My granddaughter and I came to play groups and used it. I used this library when I was in town hall. I love this place. I love the people. Jill's been a great partner and I've worked with her. But this community needs a police station and it needs it more than anyone who doesn't work down there can imagine. And you have the perfect sight. Jim McHugh, your liaison, told me he was charting like how you would get to the very small areas in this town. Town hall is nowhere near the center of town, but from this spot, you can get everywhere in East Greenbush. Didn't make it up. Didn't think about it yesterday. We've been looking at this for three and a half years. Danny and I have walked up and down that ground for three years. And. What happened? Everybody went, you guys went through hell. We went through hell. But now I, I've got two years left in this term and I'm convinced that I have to get them out of here. It's like, it's the last imperative of my career, of my professional life. And I owe it to these people who've given their heart and soul to me. I mean, the dedication is God. I never expected this. The dedication is God. It's terrifying how brave they are, how consistent they are and how. This community is not safe by accident.
I just hope you're not thinking that the board does not agree with you.
No.
The police department, you mean?
No, again, all, all we wanted was a conversation. And all I got was ignored. And, and Charlie's, Charlie's done a good job of disavowing the impulsion that eternally I was involved with. You guys dealt with it, put it, get it, know that's fine. But it's the most important request I believe this library will ever have. But it wasn't important enough for anyone to call us or get a new police station or ask follow-up questions. So in my opinion, we were wrong. And. And we don't have to be all wrong. And so what I'm saying to you is that in the entire town of East Greenbush. We think the best place, the police station, we're there. And we think that once it's there, you won't even know it's there. You will never think of that. You know, a few months, something jumps off and calling the I and the whole cavalry is there in two minutes. Or something happens here, they're right here. And Charlie, this isn't a power play attempt on my part. This is the town supervisor and the town board and the town employees. Trying to come up with the best possible solution. And it so happens that you guys are sitting on it and you're not using it. And you have so much room here. And this community is desperately needed. And I just thought that the library ward would jump on that. Forgive me.
I mean, I think there's also a rumor, like I understand what you're saying, but there's also a rumor. Yes, it is very important for the community to have a police department. And I don't want to say that. I think there may be others in the community who might. Like we have partnerships with our, you know, our strategic plan. Maybe there's other, you know, things collaborative types of services, buildings, whatever. That could be, that man could use. So, no, I think I don't want to say that. It's not fair to say that that's the only use for that land without us reaching out to other people who are benefiting from our services and who might benefit from expansion of, you know, a teen center or. Or a town museum or, I, I don't know. I mean, there's cultural things and community things that are extremely important not to, you know.
We also discussed the solar farm theoretically. Like, not to say that that land wouldn't get used. We haven't had a proper discussion or even a chance to talk about what we planned to do with this land. Like you presented this to us in July. As Mary said, this is the first time I had heard this land. When you started it three years ago, it was not communicated to the board at that time. I learned, maybe a communications issue, but to, to Mary's point, like we don't have.
I learned, maybe a communications issue, but to, um, to Mary's point, like, we don't have procedures in place for this. We don't know the proper protocols. I have been in the police station, I understand that we need a new police station. I understand there's a short timeline. What happens if you set by this land and then it's not available? Like, there's drainage issues here, there's drain, there's drainage setup here, there's wetlands right across the way. The land next to it was up for grabs and we decided not to take that because we felt there weren't. Potential issues with contamination of the site, unknown issues like that. Well. Once we sold this land to you and then you, um, can't develop it.
Can we develop it?
If we can't develop it, then it becomes town property, we just maintain property.
Except we would still own it. Right, but for no good, I guess, other than pickball meeting, if you can't develop it, so. Um, to go back to what you had said. I took away a little bit, maybe I'm misunderstood, from after we left that meeting. That you guys were thinking about, and we may have said it while we were there even, about bringing it out to the community and having a public hearing. Um, of like to see what the shareholders and the people, the users of the library, what they thought. I don't know if it was during our meeting or if it was afterwards, but. I kind of thought that's the way it was gonna go because, you know, obviously we just came to, it may have been in our heads and maybe in conversations we had. Did anything official come to you three years ago? No. But that was our official coming to you and saying, hey, this is what we have so far, let's dig into this a little bit deeper. Um, you know, we did have, kind of throw out, we kind of have a timeline, so just to give you an idea. But, um, you know, I took away, and I don't know if I'm wrong. But it's gonna be some type of more open for the public to have some input to you two, or your shareholders, I guess, whenever they may be.
I'll jump in, so to share some points, so. You know, Jack and I, we talked, um, I agree, I would, communication, I admit, communication on my part wasn't better. And I think Chief is your espousing too, right? Like, I think for us, my understanding of either going quarterback in the book is like, there's also a. Of operations of if there's. In this sphere of being more, getting more. More strategic in how we could have presented it to you in more clearly without. I think it would have been, I think my view of it was if there wasn't sufficient interest from the board to proceed. I sort of think that maybe might be where the wires are crossed up, since it might have been a successful message for the board level. As representative on a broader, you know, the library community, the library constituency. So I can apologize for that, um, but I think as testament to tonight, I think, you know, there's a potential to have more in-depth conversation with, you know, you all mentioned it. What's, what's the town library agreement? It's a waiting decision, it's not what we normally discuss, you know, July I discussed it. A lot of times our committee meetings are, you know, they're operational policies or they're, um. Their concepts that become meetings policies, so it's sort of a sea change in the scope of the, the title and the breadth of the decision-making. We need, um, so just to, you know.
And capacity issue.
Kiss a lot.
A capacity issue, you know, just it's a small board and there's things that we're working on to get through and.
Oh, you guys do a great job running the library, really does, beautiful library as well. We once found you a book that looks on the eighteen copies of the planet Earth, and they got it from here to the future library.
Did you return that one?
It was there, but I didn't find it, this, this lane on the bottom of the bag. Um, but the text was on the internet, I needed the page number, so I stayed here and did it. Um, yeah, the capacity, I don't know, I, you know, I. We are looking at this from one end, we are looking at it from another. Um, you, you make your points about it, I, I will make another point. If I go back in fifty years, that would be threats. You don't know zoning, you talk, let's do this, let's do that, we have the chance, okay? So. It just isn't to people in this town who we have thought in the last two months. There is a sense that this library is the Taj Mahal. That you are turning your back on that piece of crap police station. But you have in your hands the answer to the most pressing problem the town in East Greenwich has. And. You're saying, well, you might want a teen center? Yeah, look, this town needs a teen center, everybody needs it, there's nothing for kids to do here, but I can do that. You think this town is gonna support the library to do a teen center? There isn't a chance, people think this library is. Too big and too expensive. That's the position of the town in East Greenwich. If there was a town-wide referendum on this, it would be on, because people don't understand libraries, okay? People, you guys have a constituency here, which I was a part of before I had this job, I'll be a part after I have it. But I don't have a friend who comes here. I don't have a friend who's ever been here. People in town who love libraries know, and we see it in the poll and in the platoon, people who love libraries love this library. But being a library rep, I will tell you, people look at me strange when I say I take my vacation in libraries. Because libraries are civil. People use them for various things, I understand that. I don't care if people sleep in, you know, during the day, I'm considering talking, but you have to take a nap. A library can be a different things, but what about this library is not going to be a library. Bigger than it is ever, ever. They don't think you ever get votes. Missed that, that kind of vote, you'd have to be elected and be with. So, again, we can leave you to discuss it, we can come back another time, but. But we told you last time that we have asked, the Esper decision in two months, two months came and went, we didn't get a conversation. So I'm here, I'm angry, and I have the power to implement my. Now, what I really wanted to do is have a negotiation with you guys. And let's go through it, let's go through it, please, please. Um, come down and see the police station because it really, those of you who have seen, we know what I'm talking about. It isn't, it isn't that it's okay or it's passable. One ocean inspection, that thing is done, it's. Closed, and what do we do then? I mean, honestly, what, I. The Buffalo Business News did an affluent ranking, eight hundred and fifty upstate municipalities. East Greenwich finished forty, top five percent of upstate municipalities. We have amazing police department. And they're in, they're, they have a grinder pump that breaks, and it smells like raw sewage down there. It's just, it is so deeply unsteady. What we're, what we have right now. And we have gone up and down the turnpike, we've discussed price with people. Can't take an existing building because the demolition costs are heavy. We looked at that old place out on the turnpike, brick building, fifty-six hundred, fifty-six thousand square feet. Be three quarters of a million dollars to demolish it after a million and a half dollars to buy. What's, how are we gonna do that? You know, we're, we're, we're gonna fundraise everywhere, but anything we don't fund, we have to fund. So. It, this, for me, this, it's, it's all or nothing, I'm having my back to this. So now, showing up your perspective, so to, because we have it here, wanna be sure there's, there's questions. We have the opportunity to raise them and use the fish. Good, and so feasibility study, put it up to bed, can you give us some status on it? Um, what's that too?
Um, we have a, we were selected, and just working on. Just to make sure that it stays before we sign, and the board should be passing the resolution. Hopefully it's.
A little bit on the feasibility study, seeing as that's equal to that, that's not a level, so. So the feasibility study, sort of, you know, the town started earlier. Do you identify, can you walk us through the, the specs of the, not the specs of the bid?
Scope.
The scope of the bid, like, do you look at it from, do you start from identifying this parcel, do you look townwide, like, how does that work? So, I don't know. Of all, I was designed a police station. You know, uh, they meet with the chief and Ronnie and the guys downstairs. They find out what the needs are, um, they find out what we're looking at in terms of overall space, what the priorities are. And they will design a police station, what we can't do is apply for funding without site. Tried that, Chuck Schumer let us apply for fifteen million dollars last year on it, and we were hunting for sites and. We didn't get that because Chuck Schumer's Democrat, and that's federal funding, so we're not gonna get that. Um, but Josh Riley's putting in for money for us, the governor said she worked with John McDonald to get us funded. Wanderer General, Walmart, we're all fundraising. But we need site control before we do anything meaningful.
You need to purchase the site.
We need at least an option on. Yeah, and there are grants you can apply for that, but without a site, there is. Very hard to get. But the good news is, is that there's money for police, that is, that's why the governor, we should have a supply for technology. Where we are, so I, I guess we've hit the ball into your court, is that fair?
Can I just, so with the feasibility study, does that bring in community input? They seek that?
No, well, stakeholders, they're not stakeholders.
And so.
They're talking to the courts, they're talking to the police, um. I don't know.
But it wouldn't be, like, they wouldn't be coming to the library, the Y, the E.
Structure purposes on that?
Just the feasibility for moving, yeah, moving the police station and where it would be.
We can, we can build it if you guys need it, so. But you can talk to them.
I think that would be an important step, I think it would be, it's a necessary step. Because if we were to be partners in this, we would need access to that kind of information. And the ability to understand the project as it's being brought, whether or not we're moving forward with this definition. But if you're doing feasibility study and, and working on this through work for school districts. Um, like, you, you need all stakeholders involved, and we are a very big stakeholder in this. So we, if you were doing this feasibility study, we need to be involved. Is it a design building, or is it, are you going out for an architect? I know this is logistical, but. The feasibility company has architects running out.
Okay.
So they have all components between a logical, you know, engineer, every, all the different components, that's what we looked for in what we put out the. Uh, scope for the. Building study, so. And I, so far, just to give them an idea, I tried it, these are some of the type of things that we would need in that building. So not so much as far as aesthetically, you know, we did say we would like it to be, um. Um, not wood, you want something that's, you know, going to be sustainable for, you know, fifty or a hundred years to come, so. So we gave them that, so we haven't sat down, because like Kelly had said, we haven't finalized on the, the number yet, so. But they do know what we require for space and layout and idea of it, it's just not done yet.
So what, what is the size of the property that you?
Kelly, do you have any concerns?
We don't. No, but we're assuming probably two and a half acres. Maybe less, um, well, with the engineers. The building we plan on, you know, ten thousand or twelve thousand square feet. Got a bottom floor, obviously much bigger than the, the upper floor of a two-story building, very modern design.
So two-story building?
Two stories.
We even talked about when we were here the one time outside, like, to try to, you know, do something. So it complements, you know, this look here, you know, like, you see that a lot in construction now, you know, some, you know. Plazas kind of, kind of mirror different other places, so something like that to keep it, you know. As long as it's feasible to do, which I don't see why, I wonder if they don't on the outside, so.
Cause I like.
So with the logistics, so you said two, two, two and a half acres, like.
It would not be built upon.
Right.
Some of it would be parking lot area, some would be fenced in, well, our parking lot area, I think, like we talked about, would be fenced in, so the structure wouldn't be, obviously, you know, full, you know, spread out.
So would, does it just, logistically or site? Control, it's like, do you envision, like, having site control of a hole from that slope there to the, to the concrete? Or do you, you know, is there central subdivision or like, easement style, like, what's the? What's the kind of structure for, do you need the whole lot, do you say we need X amount, X percentage of the lot, or we take possession, or we try to take possession of the lot? What's the, for construction purposes, what's the, what, what do you see there?
You see. The, the building kind of being on the upper side and, um, with maybe a driveway going down to Michael. And the main entrance on one fifty-one. I see this site as totally secluded from the guys and landscape, so all the visibility is mostly from one fifty-one. Where it wouldn't interfere with the library at all, you know, giving it.
It's hard to say until you get someone to do the, you know, assessment of the property, and if there's wetlands or, you know, or if there's a marsh area or something like that. I think it's hard to say, um, we would, you know, our intent, like we mentioned, is to keep it as far back as possible, um, from the library. And have that buffer, so you have still that sense of privacy.
So do you have like a set, like, on the, on the one fifty-one side, like, are there, it might just be general, are there like setback requirements? Do you have from the road, or do you? I'm sure there's one of these.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, I don't know what we do to you.
Yeah, that's a little bit, yeah, right.
Yeah, but the building most likely would be as close to the road as possible.
We don't want it that far, we want to be visible, so if someone is looking for us, you know, there's like a parcel that we looked at at one point, but we would have been tucked way back off. Off the turnpike and not ideal, because if someone's looking for a police station, you know, wanna be like, okay, turn left at, you know, McDonald's and you'll see a drive-by. So obviously there's signage and stuff, but we would, it'd like to be out, I, my opinion is, without being a builder, but, um. Be out as close to the road and have just ample parking spot for those people that use it, which isn't a lot of people that, you know, our parking would be towards the back of the side. So close to the road as possible, like less, you know, area of green space, that's all that's, you know, required.
Chuck thinks the setback is true, but we're going, we should be finalizing our. Our new zoning in the next month or so.
So were you gonna be discussing this project in any of your town meetings, your public meetings anymore?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You know, uh, well, we came here, we said we have to do this fast, we need a decision in two months. Two months comes, there's no decision, so whatever, however you guys want to move forward, we can talk about, but. I don't have any more time, I really don't, because we're gonna miss a whole year's worth of funding. We don't have site control pretty soon. But it's like when you talk to Dan, you know, if we did the right landscape, then he wouldn't come down, you wouldn't even know we were there. And I agree with, I understand what Tom's saying, you know, we have to educate you on this stuff. We came here to do it, we've offered ourselves up, we went, chief, right? And twenty-four hours a day, tours are available on East Greenwich Police Station with the caveat that the seven of them, you can't come to the seven of them because you won't fit. Which is ridiculous.
All due respect, I mean, I don't need to see it to understand that you need to get out of there, I mean, you all, I, I've been there. And I can't imagine it's gotten any better since I've been there, so.
No, certainly not.
Yeah.
The problem is, is we need, well, we have a K nine program. Um, that I told us. They'll, um, you know, we can put in temporary huts behind the building, but all the stuff, yeah.
Will, will there be, um, at some point after you bring it to your board, or is not like. Will there be further along in the process, do you sort of like cost and project information provided to the community, is this, are you inviting community input at all in the process?
Yeah.
Set the plans, yeah.
Well, first off, the, the town is transparent, okay? Everything will be on the website, everybody can see what we're doing, everybody can find out. Uh, come to every town board meeting, we're doing updates. Um, you know, we, we have nothing to hide, we're, uh, we're trying to build a police station, it's a noble goal, it has. Like, we do it right, right, we need to join in. Like, to do it right, right, it being to join in partnership with you guys. That, that's the best path we'll see forward. And in fairness, you guys can comment, comment it, well, you can say I'm threatening people. This has to be done. And if eminent domain is the way it has to be done, then that's the way it's going to be done. That doesn't mean that you can't say to us, let's talk about this, that's where we were at the beginning. But if you're not gonna talk to us, we're not gonna talk to you. We're going straight and taking it. And I know that sounds not very subtle and not very nice, but it is the fact of the matter. I'm not gonna tell you the town does full transparency in that line. This sucks, you can hate me, join the, join the line, um, because it, it has to be done. Police station has to be built, that's my top priority. If you guys are not with us, then let us, let's talk it to the point where we understand that you took us seriously, because you haven't. And that's not right, that is not right. And we, we live in representative, we represent police. We represent the library. People, East Green Bush are pleading, they need their police officers to have some dignity. You know that once in a while, nine, four or five hundred people take Rensselaer County Police and say, now we're lucky to get how many?
Twenty sure that plus.
Twenty sure that, you can't get cops in. When we're fighting, we did a great contract with our cops at local police department. Recruitment is impossible, it's impossible to hold on to cops. We got guys who come in gung ho, they walk into the police station, and they sign with Rensselaer or Worth Green Bush or so. We can't, and, and what we've had to do is we've had to hire people and then clean out the department. You get some people that you wouldn't have hired if you had a fair choice. So recruitment and retention are the hardest things in the world today. And you can show people a police station like we do, fifty percent problem. It's a problem, why, why would you, why would you, why would you put on, risk your life and share the place you're in? And make jokes about it?
Were there just questions folks have?
No, I, I thank you for the information. Learned a lot of things that I didn't know.
I think, and, and I, whatever else we did, you guys want to discuss this, I believe we will discuss it more. But I'm not going to accept here is to be, to be blown off. I'm just, if you guys don't take us seriously, then I'm not going to take you seriously. And, and we move to the next step. I have no choice.
Can I request, like, to reach the interest of some of the community, just because, like, cause I, I missed the July board meeting, which is my dog's fault, really. Um, I just kind of, on the side, polled a few friends and family, and most, actually, no, everyone that I polled was in support of it, like I was. Um, I didn't bring it up because I knew I was the minority, and obviously I haven't been here, but, um, so I was just wondering if there's a way to, like, kind of, you know, get a poll together, because the way I have been asking questions, I've just been kind of putting out the facts and saying, you know, is this something that would make sense to you? Is this something that, you know, what concerns what you have? And just everyone I've talked to, it's, that it's really, like, I mean, but.
We have talked to a person who has something that's very, you know, you've talked to him about.
So. I mean, my own husband was like, I don't like cops, it's pretty, you know, so.
Joe, because you think we have the library, like?
I mean, I think public hearing would have done, me caring for the. Fire, I'm just trying to think of things that are, are bigger than, like, what, the fire district, we did a public hearing, and all that was required by law, but I think we would have done it anyways. Our strategic plan, we tried to go out and do stakeholder interviews, which sounds like you're doing, it's part of this process.
Focus groups.
And we did focus groups, and we did a community survey, I mean, that's how we tried to figure out.
Jill, you have figured any input from up our hearts in the way of the credibility organizations? Can you just do that?
Um, I can do that on my own, but I, we're, we're, we are independent from them in terms of what we do with our property.
To add to Kayla's point, everyone I spoke to was not favorable to the library.
To add account of the police station being placed by the library.
Same with me, people. So I would have a lot more onto this meeting, I definitely know you need a new police station.
No one's disputing the need for a new police station. I don't think you'll find a single person in the town or the county that will disagree with that.
May I ask you a question? Were the people that you polled, were they opposed to, have they been opposed to us coming here and partnering for our cookouts and our car seat checks and our drone, hurricane night presentations and different events, you know, in fairness, I'm just asking, you know?
I mean, I didn't ask them about their opinions about the cops appearing at events and things like that.
That's because we're here in your building and on your property, as opposed to next door, that's why I only asked, you know?
You're here for fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, an hour, two hours at a time. To put it in perspective, we love our partnership with the police. But these are pop-up events, they're not twenty-four seven sitting right next to it, and that does deserve some consideration.
I just, Karen, so if they knew that we participated in those events.
You know, so apples to oranges, but other police station, library, uh, adjacent locations in the capital region?
Um, there was, and I think I mentioned a couple that last time I was here, and when I searched it up nationally, there's a lot of police stations that have substations in their libraries nationwide. I don't, I didn't bring it back with me, that information, I apologize, but I did a quick Google search and was able to come up with that.
The community way is, it, it's my understanding that it's an, if you do this, then we take over community way. If you don't do this, we don't take over community way.
No, you have community way. Right, um, if, if, if we negotiate with you, what we will do is we will take it. Right, Danny and I put, first of all, community way is a longer road, like, you guys, it's for people, it's not for us. Over the next four or five years, that's. We've had the library come to us over the years and try to get us to take that. They offered us money to take it. Uh, quite honestly, we don't want it. You know, we have eighty-five, eighty-six miles of linear road as it is in there. That's a lot, um, but, but we'd put that on the table, and, and that would be a huge gift for the library. That would be huge for you, um. You know, I'm sure partly that's why the Y, with original favor, because they don't lose the property, but they, they lose community way. Um, I get that, you know, everybody's trying to be practical. But, uh, yeah, community way would be on the table, um, price for the. That would be on the table, but, um, but at the moment, none of that's on the table, because tonight we began a conversation, the fault we began two months ago. Questions are being asked about a process that we've been engaging for a long time, and have spent an awful lot of staff time sorting out the town hall versus. And we are faultless town hall, but, but you guys, and you made it clear in our, when we met here, that what you don't want is the court. Stragglers don't come out of police stations. You won't have anybody accident, who wander up here. People get out of a police station, they leave as fast as the pen. But on Monday nights traffic, or Tuesday nights small times, and Thursday, it's criminal. Criminal.
I think it's my very patient, the library, we go ten minutes.
In the court, Friday morning, our staff can't lose their protection to that, because it's a criminal, McNeil's in there. You find vape pens out, once they realize there's a metal detector, they throw the vape pens all over the property, you have people laundering. Bad people.
Okay, quick, quick question, and Chief too, uh, there wouldn't, it wouldn't be anything restricting if you went town hall, or had the police station take over the town hall, and having a courtroom there too?
No, because what happens, Tom, is the court is joint supervised by the OC. If town hall is somewhere else there, most supervision, that's not going down. No, and we've asked that, that's, that's a problem, yeah, yeah. And O C A, I thought O C A, I was there, um.
Believe me, I would have liked to pick a court with us for your collaboration, that was, I lost that battle, but I, you know, I certainly would have liked to.
If, if I may speak, we're talking, I've heard a lot of comments about the condition of the station. I've been, been working for the town for forty years. I worked at the other station that was right next door to the sewer treatment plant. Working days of noon time, you're trying to eat your lunch. And the sewer guys are taking and chopping up the solids, putting in a trash can and bring to the dump. That's the way it was done forty years ago. We, in May of nineteen eighty-six, we moved to the town hall from that little ranch house that had sewer rats bigger than most people's dogs. To go to start the emergency generator, we had to go down into the basement with a gun and a flashlight to go and pull that on the first pole, the generator would start. We're up in town hall, and we have the sewer pit, and it runs down the hallway, not just the odor we get every other week. But we also have to contend with the sewage backing up and running down in. I think everyone here can agree to that, that this is the safe place. My biggest concern for the past forty years, okay? Say you are a victim of a crime. Maybe your loved one just beat you up. Or you're the teller at Key Bag up here in Renssberg Plaza that got his leg stabbed on by a robber, breaking his femur. Having to go and sit in the lobby waiting for an officer to come out and talk to you. And the guy that just committed that robbery and felonious assault is now walking in front of you, because that is the only entrance way into the station. Even if we were to go upstairs, in time, you know the layout of town hall. We need multiple entry ways, and they have to be ADA compliant. That building was built during the Cold War as a, a radiation fallout building, just like Janey School. What is up in those ceilings? I've been there for forty years. I don't think it's all dust. Okay? So it's not just the safety of the employees, it's the safety of everyone that's in there. That is not a feasible place, we need a good place. I'm a civilian employee, I'm not a sworn officer. Do you know how many fights that I've had to break up in the lobby? That small little lobby that has no heat? We have an electric heater in there to keep us warm. Or, and I can count. You desperately need something, and something better. Being on the turnpike down there does not make it easier to get to places. And it's unhealthy for us and the safety of the people that we serve. Where in this town has most of the violent crimes occurred? This north end of the town. Mill Creek Apartments, we went through a summer, I believe it was eight or nine women got raped and assaulted here in Mill Creek Apartments. Columbia High School, we're on the list, not proud of it at all. We're right here, limited access into that school, the faster we can get there, the safer it's gonna be for our students. Key Bag, I just told you about, the teller got stabbed on. We've had serious crashes up here, we've had all kinds of violent crime, that's just a handful that I know over the past forty years. This is a good spot. Okay, yes, you do have all the buses here. Our officers are trained how to deal with that when responding to an incident. How many of our officers have gotten into an accident with their car because of traffic? Not many, not many at all, I really don't remember the last time, other than hitting a deer.
Yeah, that's true.
All right, I live here in Cal's corners. Growing up and all that, I don't mind that at all. And the response time, we're not the fire department, fire department responds from their station. We respond, we have units out on the street, they're not always gonna be at the station, so we have radios. That's what I do, I tell our officers where to go and how to get there. We have cameras, we can tell them, hey, it's two o'clock, do not go up Luther Road. Okay, we don't have to go Michael Road, we can go up to LA and come down the other way, there's all kinds of ways to get around. We are part of the community, and we wanna be here. Bye.
Chair, there's a question. You define soon.
Yeah.
I did once before.
I know.
Two months.
So are you saying if you don't have a decision by December, you're moving ahead with your, I think it helps everybody to know, what do you have to work with?
I don't know if it's December or the end of November, but, okay, because of Charlie, I didn't already do. This, you should be very proud of the president of the court, he was a very intelligent and persuasive gentleman. Um, so we were going to move it after you're outbuilding, but we're gonna talk about it later. But we can't wait long, we're about, most funding cycles are gonna be separate. Um, and we have, we have to be ready for them. So we're, you're, we'll talk to you one, one, two of you come, three of you come, you come to my office. Ed has a job, so he can only come.
Yeah, all you gotta do is call.
Yeah, and, and.
I will take that along.
Any combination of the people here will meet with you individually.
And a regular street.
Group, um, and we'll talk about it, because, you know, that's all we wanted from the beginning, but we didn't get it. We are going to get it, there's going to be a conversation. I, when I say we're going, we're going to get a conversation.
So we had questions that we wanted to send you.
Jay Conway at East Green Bush.
Okay, so I think that would be helpful for us. And then I also wonder, in two months, I, I, as I said before, I feel it's extremely important for us to, um, do some outreach, and maybe it's jointly we do outreach, or, um. You want to go to the survey or something?
Come on, it's, yeah.
Just to know, like, you know, we're asking. And I think, I think you, you do have a public hearing, it would be very important for all of you to be there to explain, because I learned a lot tonight. You know, I was really blindsided that this was even a discussion. So I think for people to know, you know, it's not gonna be an issue with the location, that this might be better than being at Columbia Turnpike. Because to me, it's like, well, there gotta be a Columbia Turnpike, that's where all the traffic is. So I think that hearing from you, um, I think would help people better understand. I mean, I know the need that you have for a, a new police department, because I've seen it. But I think also the year that you have looked at other locations, because I didn't know that, so I go, why don't they look at other locations? People need to know that information, so that they can make.
We tried to buy it earlier. Columbia, right, we did, yeah, yeah, we did a terrible place, but, but it's falling apart, and we could have gotten it for a good price. And it wasn't a good price, and who else? And then the price, ten times Danny, wow, from one hundred and thirty thousand, one point three million?
So people need, need to know that, you know, I mean, to me, it just came like, oh, they just decided yesterday that they wanna take our property. And I, so I think that a public hearing where you can explain not only the needs, but how. but how you can deal with the location. And I think it really, because like I said, everybody I've talked to thought it was terrible.
And everybody I've talked, thought it was good. I mean, everyone she talked to thought it was a terrible idea, which raises the issue that the way the three of us present it, pretty determines the answers.
I'd have Ronnie there.
We want Ronnie to do this.
I have a question, did you work at the old library when it was down in town hall?
No.
Was there anyone here that worked down at the town hall and the library was there? All right, I'm aging myself again.
No, I was there.
Down there, when I was there, yeah, I worked three to eleven and I knew that there was a lot of stuff going on during court night. Does anyone know where the court was prior to that? Janey School. In one of the wings, I think it's the music room. That's where court was held. And prisoners were brought into the school during the school day for arraignment. Then the town decided to move everything into one building instead of having all these buildings and rent, which back at the time made good sense. But as the town grew, we need to do something. Now, there wasn't many problems, there's not a lot of problems down at town hall because maybe we were there. Not saying we're perfect. We had a guy come up the back hill before we had cameras and lights in the back parking lot and puncture three or four carfuls of tires. We've had a subject come up over the hill and still light bars. Now we got lights, we got cameras, we can watch.
When you rest people, they didn't have.
But here, how many times has, have you called me, because I've taken your calls, for the kids that come from the school and want to fight? They come here and you guys call some word here.
There, I don't know if that's always the situation, but we've had to call for help. And we've had a good partnership.
Because they feel that
Yeah.
they're all school property, they can come here and won't have consequences at school, which they found out afterwards, that's not necessarily true. Over here at, at the Y, how many cars have gotten broken into and people had their credit cards stolen and used? How many times have we had to go here for EMS calls at the Y and as often on Rich? We're just a little bit closer. We do provide a little sense of security and safety for people. And like, I think a lot of us agree, everyone kind of likes our police department. We're not some of those people that you see in the news. We're, Taylor's not here, but we're not Seattle. Okay? We're not Seattle. This is East Brambush and we're here to protect our community.
Realistically, so you guys can focus off and define what that, elections, budgets. And if any else you've got on your plate right now, we have a decision by the end of November. As individuals, do you feel like you can make decisions?
I don't think it's our, I think we just did it while our community itself, but we can do that. I think we have to work as a board to figure out how we gather information. And I don't want, you know, I want it to be a fair gathering of information. We're not going to just ask for people who walk into the library. I mean, it's, it's community that uses.
I think a community survey is a good start and not a heavy, heavy left.
I just, I mean, that requires, and I'm not committing Jill's staff and I'm guessing.
We have, we have, we have an engineer that is leading this project.
Okay. Because that.
They may have done it rather.
To commit resources to do it and meet a timeline or timeframe that you're looking at is.
That's a part of an informed conversation.
I think everybody will feel better.
Yep.
Well, what's the, what's the temporary solution if this?
We put them in the red horn. The red horn is just.
No, I know that. What would that look like for, like, there's no ruins in there, I mean, it's just one big.
Yeah, no, that would be a place, you know, there's bathrooms there.
I'm just, I don't, it would be expensive because with our antennas and whatnot and stuff. Because our, you know, relocating that is not, if anyone's ever seen an antenna in our backyard of town hall. Only you, making what your neighbors were there with me is not, are you sure?
So fun, your funding commitments in December, like you need something to, to start working in December.
First, the first couple of sweeping of the announcements. So maybe do some. But we're also doing it politically in the US, politicians. Every politician in the US, they claim state that, boy, they're. I don't see it that way. Or we did, like town boards, if you want. We that, and we get one, we make sure we're safe. That's, you know? Yeah, it's very expensive. But, and I had a police station, building a police station is going to make it more expensive.
Problem is, the parcels in town to building a police station. Try to find two acres with Surinwater with nothing on it, that's kind of in a centrally located spot in town. You know, I mean, it kind of fits everything that the town needs to build a police station as well.
Off the top of your head, that green space out there, how many acres that total, just so the work can go, that's what two acres means.
It doesn't come, I think it's probably eight, four.
Okay, so that's not half.
Yeah, I mean, I think your parcel is ten. It may be bigger, but I, I think it's probably about four.
No, you're.
Your close with work.
I suppose, apologize. I was trying to get at it earlier, I butchered it, but apologies that Jill forces things that helps answer my question, thank you.
So another thing with the engineer, you know what I mean? They would look at that site, they would have to probably incorporate your drainage, fix all the drainage issues. They're probably going to do a little traffic study on one fifty. They may have to widen that road, put a turnoff lane in. So there's, there's a lot of different features that may come into that too.
So realistically, let's say everyone committed to work together. What is the timeline from you start working with, you know, you sign the feasibility study until shovels on the ground? What is your hopeful?
You don't have that answer. His funding. We can share it, because we know that we have the appropriate engineer on hand.
So we have time to consider all the potential possibilities and what things might look like and how it might work.
We don't have that. We don't have that much time. This is, if, what happens here is, I mean, this, this is, even if you guys said to my booth, this wouldn't be here in the spring. This is going to take, this is going to take a couple of years. And so my term ends a few years and three months. And this isn't on the way. I cannot, and I have done everything I set out to do except this, this is possible.
I mean, time to work together on what it might, like.
Two months.
Not to make the decision, but to the, like, the build, the design process, the, that's, it's not like every single decision has to be made right now. The decision has to be made whether to work together or not work together. Is that where we are right now? That that's the decision for the board?
We don't even have.
Yeah, it sounds like everyone says no.
Doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
And if you say.
If we go around here.
If you say yes, you know, it sounds right.
This is what I said, is if, if you go have a conversation with us on Facebook, it will solve, if you continue to blow us off. I am a reciprocal person, I will blow you off and I will take it. It's not, it's not a question. Now, you want to talk, we talk, we have a meaningful conversation. This is the wrong answer, we walk away. But we've, we've done our homework. And let's go out to the community. I think you're going to be very, very surprised when the community says that. Because community matters. So people who call the library might go against you, but. So let's see what happens. I, I will take off the promise of entering the community, but I would not, the town will not move on. And the town will not also be, if you guys decide no, you, you will expect an explanation, probably in writing. And if that explanation is unacceptable, I will take it. Because we're not, we are not giving you total veto. So we are not, it's too important. We want to be partners and we'll walk away. You work with us and it's not the right means.
So what information do, does the board need to declare by the end of November? Is it like, yes, we're partnering? Or is it like, this is the, like, everything is negotiated? How far do we have to go by that date in order?
If you, if it's good, then we can keep going, but if.
Okay, so the whole thing doesn't have to be brokered and done by then, it's just a decision, yes, we're willing to move forward. Okay.
How we would, we would, we would, we would, so that would, that would come, that would be enough to slide on.
So it would be the decision and then, but no, like, price negotiations, no, the board.
That, that should be part of the conversation.
Okay, I just, I guess I don't, I just want to understand.
I just want to understand. So to, I just want to parse out what's necessary versus what is like a nice to have in that part? Because I think it's, it's substantially different.
But we're, 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 we're allowed to meet again. We'll talk out our end, we'll talk out yours. But I mean, call us if you have questions. Call me, my, in the book, I mean, on the website, we can't miss, clearly know.
So how about, could you give us what you were proposing in writing? If you're looking for us to give you something back in writing?
We could pose questions.
Yeah, I mean, so that everybody's on the same page and nobody misunderstands why this is here.
And then we have a full understanding of exactly what we're responding to versus you did this piece, but we missed this piece. Because that might just be a lack of understa, I, I didn't realize we were supposed to be commenting on this or that. Or I didn't know that that was a part of this deal. Like, we, I personally, I speak for myself, I just want to have a comprehensive understanding of exactly what information is absolutely necessary so that we, you know, we can continue the partnership in a positive way, regardless of what the outcomes of the survey or anything is. It's just a matter of, I mean, we want to, we do that, we want to show respect and no matter what happens, we want to honor the questions that you're directly posing. So I just want to make sure we don't leave something off of that list or neglect the piece of information because I don't have a full understanding of exactly, you know, what, what it is. So thank you.
And there's other options too. It doesn't have to necessarily be a straight sale. Maybe you look into a lease or something like that, that's a lot to consider. Does the library want to maintain, you know, control of the property? But then you're a landlord, so you don't necessarily want to be a landlord, so.
Yeah, but, but in fairness to Tom's point, that, those are the kind of ideas we were wondering would come up, you know? That, that's a conversation. We, we were watching what Clinton Heights is doing in front of Kmart. And they're going to pay nine hundred thousand dollars a month to lease from a private development.
Never have, never owned.
And in forty years of leases, they would spend four to four fifths dollars per month. And apparently in December, this Clinton Heights district was wide open. But they've already approved the tax, you know, which doubled the fire attacks in Clinton Heights. We wish, what Wednesday night is doing with education for the new station.
Jack, can I also, I think it would also be good for us to know who the communication points are. So that, you know, if you lay in Jill or talk, okay. Because if you want to communicate with the board, I think it needs to be to Charlie at least.
Yeah, I told, I told Charlie.
Yeah.
We'll spend touch, but you can, you know, like, Dan Fiaco is the commissioner of the board, you can talk to Danny. Ed's on the town board, Ron Williams is a senior, is this senior, is that the title now? Senior dispatcher, almost the longest serving. And Collins is director of finance, so at the end of the day, she was the person.
I just want to make sure that, you know, I mean, Jill obviously has communicated with you guys regularly, but again, looking, if you're looking for this from the board.
Jack's email is on the back of that card, I'm on the front of the card. The phone number is the same, all that phone number.
And I'll get you back to her. She just had answered questions.
Sounds good, thank you.
Are there questions from the board? I don't know, it would be great if you'd come down and end this conversation, ask any questions. Now, there's nothing else, nobody. Motion to adjourn the October sixth, twenty twenty five special library meeting. Make it, make a second, a little favor. Motion to adjourn, and meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.